I'm gonna call this meeting to order, the Dunbar Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, October twelfth. All three selectmen present, town administrator is present. Including for the citizens of Dunbar is Mr. Leo Martel. Thank you, Leo. Okay, um, we have some minutes available, gentlemen?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
All seconded motion. Any discussion on those? I don't think they were straightforward. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, as, I'm gonna open a public comment, back row. Sure.
The law force. As you guys did email last week, do you guys get it?
That's, that's Fred Mullin speaking for the record.
Okay. The perimilation for that town line is gonna be this coming Sunday?
Yep, did you get my email back?
And, uh, we're gonna meet here quarter past twelve. And the, uh, I met, I was one on the Selectmen from where Tuesday? Can you us do rain or shine?
Looks like it's gonna be nice.
It's gonna be a nice day.
I'm gonna make it, Fred, I didn't email you back, but it was only today that I did that.
Yeah, well, I sent one last week to you guys.
Yeah, I, I blew you off on that one.
Jeff Charles sent one also.
Yeah. Well, that's good.
I'll try to make it, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to, but.
So if you're not here, we'll see you later.
Yeah, exactly. Hey, even if I can come for a couple, maybe I'll just drive my own vehicle from here and get you guys over there.
Okay, I'll close public comment, and, uh, a road agent is on his way. Okay, while we're waiting for the road agent, let's talk about some health trust and medical rates for two eight three four, please.
All right, we're giving the board a summary sheet, however, the rate scores and packets won't be available until Monday. And because the board doesn't meet for another week, I just wanted to make sure that they had this information. Uh, so basically, there's a slight increase in the short-term disability, a decrease in the long-term disability. The dental rates for twenty twenty-four will go up four point seven percent. And then the medical rates will increase fifteen point six percent, as you can see in our spreadsheet. We offer two plans of medical rate and one plan of dental rate. Doesn't change for either plan.
Okay, Fred, any questions? Hearing none, thank you, Lynn.
Do you have a little bit of any changes?
No, I like the idea that we have a two plans, so one's the, uh, the baseline plan is the one we offer free to, uh, those employees invested, and if anyone wants a little additional, okay, they can opt to get the additional at their expense. I think it's a great option to give employees. Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay.
Um, the budget strategy, uh, for twenty twenty-four. I was going back and forth, uh, we were just talking to Lynn generally, I said we need to talk about it because the budget season's coming up. What Lynn will usually do is put out some guidance to the department heads. And so I think copying a lot of what you did with the level services. Because sometimes a department will couple the specific need, like the garage doors from the fire station this year. We always address them and set money aside as we need to for them, so. And social security is also going up, uh, cost of living is three point two percent. And the thing is, uh, last year, we, uh, gave them, uh, we gave two types of raises last year. We did a, uh, uh, targeted raises for those employees who needed raises. Then we did a cost of living raise on top of that, which was pretty healthy, I thought. And the question is, do we do, uh, in the past, we didn't let go point. So we either, we do three percent, uh, I was saying three point five percent. Yeah, I know I'm making the exception, all four percent. And the thing is, so I, I throw those on the table, and, uh, what are you guys thinking?
Well, I remember last year, we could've gone up to like five percent, but we had done the other raises, and we determined to try and keep it more level.
Correct.
And stick it three percent. I know it was point seven when you and I first became selectmen.
Right.
We brought it up, I think, to two, and then went to three. I, if we can, I'd like to try and keep it around the three, keep it level, because I find that this year kinda it's gonna have a substantial drop. And I'd like to try and keep it level instead of going way down in this coming year.
Just do, uh, weren't we above three?
We were at four.
We were four.
I was gonna say four last.
I think we were, we were negotiating back and forth.
Oh, did we?
Yeah.
And it was three prior to that?
Yeah, yeah, because it was a mandate on the floor.
I must've been shooting for three and he was shooting for nine.
Talking about three and then he went to five.
It was a mandate on the floor, the previous year, we turned it up to four percent, or three percent.
Not to three percent, yeah. So I'd like to try and keep it around three, I don't know what you guys are thinking about. Well, as I said, social security's only three point two, I think three is, it would be, I, two, anything less than three would be, I think it should be about three. Because in the private sector, it's gonna be a tough year coming up. Yeah, okay, uh, on consensus then, three percent?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can put that out for the budgets, you can plan on three percent's, um, cost of living. All right. All right, moving on, um, we have, uh, garden club request permission to put up a sign on the triangle and then the Caleb statue. The sign is a three by five sign, three feet by, uh, three by five feet. For, for new for twenty twenty-four, it's, uh, talking about caphers. Remember how they used to sell those, that was a pretty much, I thought they used to do that, and they're coming back, looks like.
I don't have an issue with that.
For how long, uh, if I was gonna talk to, uh, October thirty first, I don't know, we should do that. So consensus, yes?
Yes.
Any initial? Okay, um, I always like this one, the next one, we have a check from, are you exceeded a check, you still want to?
Yeah.
Uh, if you called earlier this year, we had a, uh, incident with our, uh, police car got, um,
Damage?
Damage, and they, we, we, Primex was able to recover the, uh, deductible from the, depending, uh, party. So we have a thousand dollars returned, so we got paid initially. And so, um, I'd like to make a motion, we accept one thousand dollars, uh, from Primex.
Yeah.
Four hundred employees on a strike.
Yeah, it already took two years to get a truck.
Yeah.
If you can get one.
Yeah, so I mean, eighty eight K.
Leasing is an option.
Well, eighty one, if they go with plan A, if he goes with the higher plan than the town's response for four. Seven thousand more on eighty twenty rates.
Substantial money.
Yeah.
And it doesn't go away once you start.
No, no, I mean, we had kind of talked about this and I got the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
We could do this and not go through the March town meeting.
Absolutely. The thing is, what, one of the discussions we had earlier that we would use, if, if funding was available, we use remaining fundings at the select behalf of this current year. We have a short year and then we'd have to add eighty plus thousand into next year's budget.
Yes.
And, and, and Tommy.
Are we prepared to do that? We can't, we can't absorb it in the highway.
Oh, no.
We don't, we.
And I know you guys realize that, but I just. Absolutely, we have to think about that. That's, you know, just thinking about payroll too, if we lease a truck.
Yeah.
I mean, we were talking upwards, I mean, what, I didn't get figured.
Yeah, I didn't get an exact number. It's a doable thing. They have all kinds of plans you can do, you can. The best thing you do, they, very few vendors have a truck sitting on the lot ready to go. They build them per water, so to speak. And right now, they were down going around ten months, but with this strike with the MAC, I don't know, I mean, it, it's a momentary. It could be up to a year before you actually take delivery, once you sign that dog.
So you want to recommend getting an employee until we have a truck for sure?
Well, so this, this most likely is a next year proposition. Yes, because it's, it's something else to get.
Oh, absolutely.
The truck, I, I'm assuming even though it's a lease, we gotta bring that before the voters, don't we?
No.
No, you, the town could just, I mean, if, how would a voter, I'm just being devil's advocate here, how would a voter take that? It's like, you know, here we have a town.
Well, I think.
Behind a guy for eighty thousand dollars, we're on the hook for.
I think if we have time, I think that all of it should be brought from the voter.
I don't have any problem with that. I, 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 I think it's. The way the town has done business in the past, right or wrong, but I would just honestly feel guilty saying, alright, this is your, your budget. I would found a budget going up about two hundred thousand dollars, I'm just throwing that number out there because of these two items. And it's like, alright, well, we're gonna cut the budget somewhere, so that would cut it from the operating side.
That's, that's the challenge is, the challenge is, we hit this winter, you're down one plow driver.
Yep.
And the thing is, people are not gonna get plowed up in a timely fashion.
Yes.
By March, they're gonna be saying, we need another, need a full-time employee, they'll jump on that.
And I don't, Dave and I had this discussion before on our own, we thought, and Justin, I'm sure is aware of it. And the economy changes sometimes.
Economy changes, right.
But it, it, it hasn't affected this end of it in that way yet.
And it may, next year, it might be a totally different.
There may be.
This coming year is gonna be much different.
Yeah, there may be people that are looking for that opportunity, both as a subcontractor and as an employee. You know, so.
I think.
What do you recommend? I think we can bounce along the way we are this year, but I think we ought to formulate a solid plan for this year.
And go to the voters.
And that we can bring to the voters and say, this is what we'll do, because like Dave says, we're gonna, if we vote to do this, we're on the hook for it. If we say, yeah, we're gonna lease a truck.
Forever.
Yeah, it's not like, it's not like the purchase price of a big number, but it's a commitment every year, make that lease payment.
And the biggest thing this year, obviously, you said, from town meetings, we, we could get our budget shot down and go to the default budget.
Right, but if you look at, if, if voters really look at what, what, what they voted on last year.
Yeah.
They voted on the blonds and the roads, the roads, the roads have, you can see anywhere in town where you've done paving, you can see the proof.
And everybody was happy with that.
We're higher than that. But the thing is, our budget increase just this tax year is this much, school is this much. The thing is, the shutting us down is, is like, I think.
How big was the school?
This. But, but.
Is that a feet or inches?
I, I.
Well, I'm just saying, if we have that sort of budget for next year, we get shot down, we have to take it out, absorb it.
Or, or we just don't hire it and people are.
Now, vintage shutout.
I don't agree.
I, I don't.
I know, but I'm saying if we are to hire, hire this year.
They're not hiring this year.
No, we, we based on one recommendation.
I do have a reliable part-time guy. That his work schedule has changed, so he's available. He's not available every day. He'll, he'll plow somebody perfectly capable, he knows the route, and he can use our one ton.
Yep.
To plow that, but it just doesn't have to be every day. Wednesday and Saturday, he has a commitment, his, his real job, he has to go. But other than that, he's free, he's willing to help solve, that's gonna help take care of job. Um, I'm hoping this gentleman I talked to will materialize. I, I can't tell you for sure today, and who else? Tomorrow morning someone will call. It's the time of year when these guys are really starting to think about it.
They will.
But I, I would be more comfortable personally if we presented a good, solid plan at town meeting. For, because this is a pretty, I, I feel it's a pretty big.
Okay, and, and I mean, I think people are gonna have a bit of a sticker shock when they get this second tax bill this year.
Yeah.
Because.
That was my next.
Yeah, and we all know how, a lot of us in here in this room and deal with every day, know how the system works. We paid fifty percent of the previous year. We absorb that, as you know, I'm just telling you.
Hundred percent the increase.
Yeah, and it's on your second bill. I think that could. So change a lot of people's temperament.
And a lot of people understand, I'm not saying that everybody's gonna be.
What comments from the, from the back?
Well, well, no, I understand the need to listen, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna talk against that. When you're talking about you need to make a plan which is correct.
Yes.
Because Jeff's not the only department that's gonna need something, oh, we're getting ready for a new fire truck.
Yeah, absolutely. The funding for the fire trucks in place. Funding for the fire trucks should be like.
Well, no, I don't think so.
Like a four hundred thousand.
Yeah, no, you wanna John say, you're talking about sixteen.
No, no, he's gonna get, he's working the used ones.
Oh, okay, right, I'm, I'm just saying, now.
No, I agree, I agree, I agree. I agree with you, he did say on a brand new one, this X amount of dollars, but.
And I, and you say it could be a lease also, but my, my point is, so if you're gonna make a plan which makes sense, or it does make sense. You wanna keep in mind the other department's plans too, because, you know, the next thing you know, you're gonna get kicked in the ass over here, you know?
Absolutely.
That's when the people aren't gonna understand.
Yeah, and we all realize that, and I think we're, you know, we're sympathetic, we're all taxpayers too, you know?
Well, when you start going up a thousand dollars a year, even I can't afford it eventually.
Yeah, and.
Thousand dollars a year.
And you, do you think you have enough work to support another full-time employee during the summertime?
Yes, we would, yes, we would.
So the thing is, we gotta start crafting that, a plan presented before the voters' march.
Yes, that's what I do usually.
Can I just speak on this?
Please.
I crunched the numbers this year. Um, when we presented this budget, I was taking into account two full-time officers, which would have had full-time benefits, retirement, health. And those didn't come, those individuals didn't fill those positions until later in the year. So I used, I looked at all the accounts that would have, would be affected by a full-timer, and I've come up with about fifty thousand dollars. That are still in my budget, not including what I'll need for October and November, December this year. So there's some money there to at least get a part-time pay in, to do the hours, whereas I don't know if his budget will support.
We're, we're not gonna get a part-time employee that's willing to work forty hours a week.
No, no, but even if you, if you hire this person to plow this year, and you don't have the money in your budget, I just wanted to say.
We've got the budget, we have a budget for the subcontractor.
Yeah. Yeah, so he's gonna use his.
Yeah, that's just the regulate, that's the replace.
And you're gonna go with that for next year.
That comes out of my operating budget, that's got nothing to do with.
You're in a, a, a credit balance, a negative balance for your contract.
I'm aware of that, but. That's the way it works some years, as you know, we spend more and the other less, we balance it out. There's enough money in my operating budget to absorb it. And we had had this discussion earlier last year during the budget season, in fact, I believe Justin's what brought it up. With the rate increase we gave in expectation of having some more roads to climb, if I was too low on that budget and I said. We can work with it this year because we can move it around, but next year, that's again, that's another thing, you probably, we are gonna have to increase it sometime, because we're just. Running from one side of the budget.
Yeah, but then when your roads are paved, so you shouldn't be like.
You would think so.
A lot quicker too.
Yeah, yeah, a lot.
No more bumps.
Well, it's a smoother ride.
Some are quicker, some are, but it's gonna weigh down.
Except for I don't know if we're gonna be able to paint them while alone, I think we'll be out of.
It's too cold.
Anyway, no, I, we're all on the same page with this, I think we understand it. Um, I can't, I didn't mean to like snap at you, but we had talked about finding maybe a part-time individual starter this year and roll them into a full-time thing. Every town around us is looking for that same individual. Everybody is. And what would be the assignment to come to Dunbar for a part-time job with no benefits?
Best boss.
Yeah, beautiful working conditions. You're gonna throw that at me on the TV.
So does everyone.
And, uh, you know what I mean? So who would be their home?
Look, I am the hope that.
Yeah, it could turn into a full job, me.
And you need a truck to go with it too.
Yeah.
Which we need.
Yeah, we, we won't, if, unless we purchase another vehicle, we're not really gonna better our position. We'll just have another helper for full-time, which is good, that's not a bad thing, and it would take the place of the part-time helper. So the part-time help would go away, the full-time guy would be there, but you still gotta give the tools, and this subcontractors and trucks is gonna be harder now.
If you're over budget this year.
Yeah.
I'm not getting them all.
No, we'll, we'll make.
Do you think there's a concern making a commitment to a truck if we don't have an employee committed?
Buying a truck?
Yeah, if we commit to buying a truck instead of.
No, leasing a truck, right?
Yeah, I, I think, I know, I know what you're saying.
Like, because the employment situation is so difficult, right?
But I think there's, over time, that we could, we could find somebody, but we, again, we wanna be offering that full-time position with whatever benefits the town can offer. You know, because. And, and I do think eventually all these positions will get filled, I don't.
I think the economy has changed too.
But I understand what you're saying, it's like, why make that investment if something's just gonna sit in the garage?
Well, my question is, can we do it in the summertime where the new person could be driving a one-ton?
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yes.
And we can basically say facilitating the truck by plowing season of next year.
Exactly, that would be my goal.
No, so that we could try and hire before.
Yes, we, we come up with a game plan. We come up with a game plan.
After town meeting.
And, and, and let's say, well, now I don't know what day town meeting is, let's say it's the twelfth. And on the thirteenth, if we ever need to go there, we advertise for that full-time position. And like you said, fill it, get the guy on board, it might take a while to do that, and then in the meantime, order the vehicle and. It's tough to find a used dump truck that's set up for plowing.
I think, I think the leasing for a relevant, an economical way to start this position off.
Cause it, it keeps the budget lower and you've got a brand-new piece of equipment. And with these towns, a lot of towns now, they've gotten on a system where they keep these trucks just a few years. Because of this, a lot of mechanical issues with them and they trade it. So I don't think we really wanna be purchasing a truck that's, you know, it might sound like a good deal, it's got thirty-five thousand miles on it and it's only eight years old, but.
That's when things start to break.
Well, yeah, we, we'd have to figure out, we got this one, then we're gonna have to put X number of dollars.
We, we bought four new trucks from my office this year.
Yeah.
You have to order them when they tell you to.
Yeah.
They don't give you a price till they ship them, so you're left in limbo for almost an entire year.
Yeah.
On the pricing, they can't tell you, they know it's gonna be more than last year, but they don't know how much more. And if you don't get in the queue and put your order in for a truck, you can forget seeing the truck for two years, you know?
The Western Star manufacturers, which is one we have now, they were a little more, they had more trucks available in a quicker timeframe. If you went with the MAC truck.
Yeah.
They have a lot of them where they can only, they can only sell so many. Every dealer or region got X number of trucks and they had to divide them up.
That's right, and they're all at their allotment, so.
Yeah, and, but the, but there's, there's other trucks too, and they're, they're good trucks. We so far have had good luck with the truck we bought, we've had no major issues. Um, you know, it's got all the, all the, um. All the pollution and the new stuff that every truck has, it's, it's a little finicky, but we haven't had to take it to the shop or anything, I mean, everything's. Work, everything appears to be functioning well on it, and it's two thousand twenty, we've gotten about this time of year, so this is three years we've been holding it back.
That's great. Okay, so we have at least a ten of game plan there.
Yeah.
How, we, we, what we don't, I think the call you in here is we don't wanna leave you in a lurch, because we know.
Oh, no.
We wanna support you.
And, and again, I'm just not to keep you all nuts, but my budget in two this year was a little weird, because we. It took us a while to catch up on the lawn paper, now we're making lawn papers, right? We want a little time where we had like a forgiveness year, first year.
Yeah.
Now we're in that, but it should get reduced every year.
Now we're in the heaviest year.
Next year, it's gonna drop about eight thousand dollars.
And then, then, then it goes out after five years.
But you're still gonna need a, a maintenance line.
Oh, yes, definitely, and then when it's paid off, somebody will be up here asking for a loan.
Exactly. Scary. Uh, I also wanna remind you that, uh, we're getting close on Kelsey Road, we're, we're gonna have to augment that, and please include that in your budget this year. For Kelsey Road, uh, it's subdivision, and once it's approved, we're gonna, the town's gonna have their share of improvements. And we have, don't have to do it this year, but remember we have a.
Yeah, I know, I, I know.
I just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
I know it's getting closer.
It's getting closer, and we're getting to, uh.
It's not, not yet.
No, I, I, my thing is, the, um, the turnaround will be enhanced to support your larger vehicles.
Yes.
And we're making good progress on that.
I'm looking at it, it has been set.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw the most of it.
Yeah. Jeff, one thing we did, uh, I don't know if Lena and Phil you know, I asked, because there's so many flags and ribbons and all this out there. I said, who's gonna ribbon off this new section so that it's done properly, and Jeff knows where it is when he goes out there? And fairly close, you know?
Remove all the ones that are pertinent.
And, um. Lena put it in there, the date there to do that.
Before the hearing.
And we want to have it done before the public hearing, so.
If part of that would have to be done for the subdivision anyway, to get the approval, the monument set and all that stuff. So it's kinda on their end, I think it dovetails together.
It does, but I, I need to do it because it needs to be done by the fifteenth.
It should be done before you have a meeting, in case anybody.
Says show me where it is.
Yeah, so.
There is a walk-through.
And I was.
Should we send an email to that effect to their.
Again?
I would say that we should, because it's gonna come out, and we're gonna have a public meeting, I think there's gonna be no stakes.
Yeah, cause, um, all the above has been noticed, um, sort of a mail return receipt's been put in the banner, being printed.
But just any of the other markings that aren't corrected or sugar relief here should be moved and rolled.
I don't think we should have them remove them, I think, because we had, um, Bartlett set those. Sometimes they will remove the stake, but they'll put a, uh, a steel one in there that they can locate afterwards.
And hopefully, obviously, we thought we were gonna be able to probe their head on this deal, but in the end result here, I think it's a kick in the butt, but I think it's good.
You're talking about the flags now then, right? Just the flags, remove the flags.
The, the stakes, because Bartlett may wanna put some, like, I know some of them stakes have a metal rod down in the ground. So if we have Bartlett, you know, remove all but the pertinent ones for us. Cause we don't want his guy pulling out whatever ones they want, I think. We paid Bartlett to do this two or three times, so I think it'd be good to do it right.
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be additional costs, but.
I know it will be, but it's.
Gotta have it right.
This, just make sure to tell them, Lena, if they need to stake it for future, but they put a pin in the ground, so it won't be, uh, re-erecting the road if they need to find them again.
Kind of, once this goes through, what? Um, being optimistic that it's gonna go through, you know, stamp laws, then when the power company and the pole picks up. And the pole being out of the way, and then we can enhance it. Um, if the weather, everything falls into place pretty quick, and the weather isn't real bad, we may be able to get some of that done before real winter gets here, well, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's all I got with that.
No, I was, I just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, no, Lena, I've been through Donna and Lena, they're on top of it.
No, and we.
Have the reports.
And we appreciate the, I know you're on the planning board, we appreciate the, uh, the planning board input too.
Yeah, well, it was all within opinion.
Yeah. Okay, I know one, one thing I'd like to ask you, can I ask you right now?
Absolutely, yes.
It's all yours.
It's, yeah.
Oh, is it?
You guys need more to do. This is every other week, we're gonna go once a month. Holy, holy, did you work on something? Anyway, uh, the state auction.
Yes.
Is coming, we were gonna put that international plow truck in it.
Yes.
Bring into a little issue. It, uh, runs and quits, runs and quits, the batteries were completely dead on it. So I was gonna have to get new batteries to make it so it would stop, because they want them running when you take them there. And also, if you're under that auction-type setting, you could get virtually nothing from the truck.
So everybody's gonna stay aware of it.
Somebody will bet on it, so what I'd like to do would be sell it private sale, because then an individual or individuals can come look at the truck. They can hear it run the way it does, it stops and stops, and we, we had it diagnosed, we know what the problem is, it's an injector in the motor. And to fix it, it was like four thousand dollars. We're not gonna put that kind of money, that's just a quick enough estimate for the, the, uh. Danny Bowley, who's done to work on the trucks, and it's like, we're not gonna put any money into it like that. So I could tell an individual that's what the diagnosis is, where they believe in it.
Too bad, because that auction's been getting big money for everything else.
Yeah, but if it, if it doesn't run and it sits there.
I know.
You know, everybody's gonna say.
I thought you were gonna say you needed batteries.
Well, if it was just that, we brought, we, well, it'd be six hundred bucks, three batteries, two hundred bucks a piece. So, I mean, it, nothing's cheap, but anyway, I, I'd like to.
I have no problem.
What's the process for selling it, private sale?
Just same process, same, yeah.
Through, goes through NHMA, we can put it in the paper.
We can do all sorts of things.
Same as Woody's, since stuff down there, sometimes we do private.
I've been a Facebook.
We, we can just advertise it, like.
Yeah.
Yep.
We can put on our town website.
Do you know what it should be for scrap?
I have no idea.
Because it is heavy, so I think it's.
Yeah, I, I, I really have no idea. I'd be guessing, I don't.
It'd probably be three or four thousand, just scrap, but still, that, that truck has some value to somebody still, but a lot of times. Whatever you're told, and again, I could be wrong, you used to be able to just wheel the things in there and drop them off, but they want all the fluids and stuff.
They do.
Not that that's the end of the world, but their, their reaction is a reaction.
Yeah.
We can't just call up and say, hey, come get this truck.
Okay, alright, I, so we can pursue that. Can I, can I move that on, private sale, go for it?
And I am, I'm very confident we'll get as much, if not more, than we would if we went at auction, I just mean. And if us, we went to the auction, we had to pay a seller's break, that's how the guy pays, whatever, that percentage is.
No, I have no, we have no issue with that.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I think you're doing, you know, without the rules or regulations, you, you guys just gonna, it makes it painstakingly terrible to sell it.
Yeah.
You, you, as you said, you could get a dollar for it.
Yeah, yeah. So, alright, thanks, I appreciate that, thanks for your help with that.
You're all set.
And we'll, uh, we'll, we'll formulate a good, solid plan that's powerful, but it is gonna increase my budget substantially.
Okay. But things the town is growing to.
Yep, three thousand sixty.
Well, it's not gonna increase it until we go to town meeting.
Well, I, yeah.
Microeconomic increase.
Well, don't forget, you know, just because, you know, you, if, if one is gone, you're still gonna need maintenance line in there, I mean.
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean, we can't, there's no place to shave it.
No, it's, in fact, it's, it's gonna go one way.
It has to be in addition.
Absolutely.
I think. You got enough level budget.
Level, level budget, you're gonna have to talk about.
We're in tough times.
Alright, yeah, thanks. Thank you, Jeff, for coming in.
Yeah.
Okay, at this point, we're open to public comment. Back row.
Well, I have a problem, I came in because.
Okay, sure, if you just state your name for the record, we're like being named.
My name is Zane Alman.
And address?
Andy Road, Royal Road.
Come on up closer, okay, now, yeah.
My former man of that, I installed a solar panel system in my house. I did it myself.
Okay.
And I came here and got an equipment, I believe I paid the hundred fifty bucks.
Okay.
And they said, go ahead and put it on, and when you're done, you come back. When I'm done, I come back, and then I found out that I have to go file with EverSource. Okay? Application, so I did that too. So here is that application, which they said that they approved it. And then they said this document should go to the inspector. Town inspector.
Okay.
And he won't approve it. So he came to my house and he said, this is not right, this is not right, this is not right. I said, well, if you are inspector, you should know, you should tell me what is not right, so I didn't record. He has no clue. I don't think he knows anything about electricity. Okay? So I'm stuck in here, I have my power system ready, and he won't approve it. Now he wants me to hire an electrician to inspect it. So this is the system I probably have with him, and I even have.
Now you called to me, right?
Yes.
And I, I returned your call, but I wasn't able to reach back to you.
Yeah, but I, I wasn't there, so I called you back, and.
Yeah.
Uh, we didn't get it.
So I called, I called Donna after, when I couldn't reach you, to try and get some background, Donna's the girl that.
Donna is, I hired, I hired him, hired a, uh, electrician, and the last thing he spoke to him, and that's what he told me. Okay? He's making him run through the homes and.
So chance to speak to Ron and still want to create a clean hundreds.
So he said, he don't wanna do it, he don't want that. I can even find a solar technician here or here and there. All these people that do their business and.
So the electrician didn't wanna get into it, basically, is what it says. Now, when I, when I did speak with Donna, and it was fairly early this morning, maybe you have some new paperwork. Um, they were under the understanding, public service hadn't approved it yet.
I have this, if you wanna read this, they want.
Certificate of completion. So I see they granted you commission, permission to install it.
Yeah, but that's what, now this, all these documents supposed to go to the high inspector, and he approves it, and then they can put a admieter of ours.
Right. So they give you, they give you permission to start this, but there's no completion to this report.
There is a, uh, completion, uh, thing there, you know, that when I file the application, the power clerk online. That's what the last step was.
And your customer signature's not even on here.
And here. This is my family.
None of the inverter informations filled out?
This is the last one Brian had me.
Says here that I cannot assist you until you're, same thing Donna told me, obtain approval from EverSource. Which I think is, is like their, is that the approval right there?
Well, it's not, the, nothing signed, they might, that is a.
Right, it's a self, it's a self-approval system.
Yeah, you have to, it's always be signed and filled out, I think.
Right.
Seems like you're very close, you're like in the middle of it, but I think you've gotta finish this paperwork with EverSource first.
I sent it to him actually, the compy of it.
So Brian?
To Brian?
Yes. And uh.
What did he tell you after you sent it out?
It seemed like he was a lot confused, you know?
All, all he's supposed to sign inspection system has been installed, inspector complains with the local building electrical code of the, of that one. That's the only thing he signs.
Right, and then he goes, another signature right there.
And then he goes, I hear my server has been approved.
Can sign that too.
Yeah, homeowners can sign that.
It's not signed anywhere.
No. Uh, I would say, have they signed it, have them drop it off?
I would, but uh, I would sign it and also provide it for EverSource. Brian reached out to EverSource, and they said, I'm gonna complete that thing from what I heard. So Brian is asking you to finish these forms up with EverSource, which I think you're gonna need a few. I think you're very close, you just need a few signatures on these forms. As a homeowner, I think you're able to do it.
Okay, so he probably gonna be here this morning.
You see where you need the signatures?
I can do that, but.
Yeah.
If I'm gonna be good?
Well, I, I would think you need to, once you sign that, resupply it to EverSource, and EverSource will call him with an approval.
My understanding is that he, he, he told me that, when he says EverSource, everything is okay, and that's it.
Yeah.
You know, they will come and change the meter.
Yeah.
So how are you gonna say, yes, okay?
It's a circle.
It's a circle.
When you finish that portion with EverSource, they will let Brian know that that portion is done, he will sign off on his portion.
I, you, what, what's missing is your certification that you've completed the work. The, the, that, that, all the form says is you, you're authorized to start the work, we bless you and all that kinda stuff. And you have to attest at the bottom, one of those things is that customer, you're the customer, you have to attest to that.
I think we e-signed it under the bill.
Okay.
Or an e-sign.
Okay. If you e-signed it, then it's.
Then it should be done.
And do you have, who's your contact person at EverSource, Leah or somebody for solar?
I've been, I've been talking to a whole bunch of people, you know, but then finally the end of this application.
Okay, you should reach out to whoever approves that application, and have them call the building inspector and let them know it's good to go.
There's nobody there, you gotta go on that, you, you don't talk to nobody. And then you complete that, and there's a power clerk. You, they tell you this and do that, and that was the last thing there.
Because I know.
Final step.
Thinking out loud here, Brian's only other step would be to call.
If Brian says it's okay. If Brian says it's okay, they will come and put it, I think, all right. But Brian, I don't know what he expects, I mean, is he, does he have any electric?
He's been doing, he's been doing this job for a lot of years, so he doesn't.
Does he have an official background?
Does he have what?
Electrician.
Uh, I'm not sure, I don't think, he doesn't have any licenses in the.
But when you have a code or law, do they have a guideline?
They have different sections in there.
Yeah, I, I asked him, I said, why don't you give me a code? I mean, if something is not, just tell me what is not happening.
Well, he could give you a copy of the code book, but the code book's very thick, you know, it's not.
No, but just for this one, I don't need it on the other codes.
Right.
I don't think he ever read it.
Maybe somebody from the public that wants to speak. John Rosby, somebody stuck on myself. I've had to do some stuff with EverSource, and anything I've ever had to do, it usually starts with a work order number. You get a hold of them, they give you a work order number, and everything ties into that.
That's what I was referencing.
I mean, that, that's like, seems to be.
And when you have that work order number, you can contact them, and then go through the work order number.
And that, that ties everything.
Can I see that? It could be one.
But there's an application ID number. I think that because this is solar, it might be a little different than what you and I are used to, Jeff.
Yeah.
But there is a solar application number. And it would be nice to get a copy of the E form, which is signed for our building inspector.
He looks at that as a blank form. I know you signed an E form, but it, it, it could, somehow get it, it's been signed by E form, sometimes you can have it e-signed.
I can sign it, give it to him then.
Yeah. I don't see why.
I would, I would start with that.
Okay.
And then there is a, there is an application number on there, so right while you're in here in front of Donna, we should be able, should be able to contact public service and get them to respond somehow.
EverSource.
EverSource, I'm sorry.
David.
Yeah. So you're in kind of a catch twenty-two. The only other option I know that Brian has under his belt is he can call the state electrical inspector and come down and walk through the process a little bit more thoroughly with you, but I think that might be more than you want, so.
And then the pastor, the uh, previous uh, building inspector who wasn't, was not experienced, would call upon the state, and he would, did not know, he called upon the man coming out.
They'll have a plumbing inspector and a state electrical inspector that comes out, helps building departments go through the process.
Well, I'll see him tomorrow.
Yeah.
And then maybe you'll talk to that.
Yeah, thanks for reaching out to us and let us know how it works out.
Please, let us know the result.
Okay. It seems like you're kind of in the middle of everything now.
Yeah, I know, everybody is going around and around, you know?
We're happy to you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
I look forward to hearing back from you though. With a thumbs up. That's frustrating.
Yeah.
Will you articulate to Donna what's going on with that too?
I'm well aware of what's going on.
Okay. Okay, um, public comment, anything else back row? I'm gonna bring it back to the board, Lena, as far as the county ministry, which is.
As you all know, we have not quite set tax rate yet, but I am in the queue, and I expect to have it all a little bit more, we need again next week.
Where are you in the queue? Your performance will result based upon this.
I have all my paperwork filed, they're just reviewing the local school.
What's the deadline for duty?
She needs uh, thirty days to get the tax bills due on the first of December, so they have to be stopped and mailed by November, uh, before November first, so we're kind of getting close, but I think we can still make it. Um, I wanted to let the board know that I have had the handyman a look at a situation with the the smells and whatnot that continue to occur in here, and he said that the dehumidifier.
This is the cleanest air in the world.
The de, dehumidifier in the basement, because of the uh, dirt floor, may help remove some of the moisture that's coming up through the building. It's an old building, and we realize we have to, you know, work with what we've got. But um, for a small fix, a dehumidifier installed with the hose into the sump pump, um, that self-maintained, that we don't have to go down there empty or anything, will probably be the least expensive uh, avenue to, to address that, we're gonna try that. And then um, when the, we had a malfunction with the sprinkler system last week, um, the fire chief and Mary noticed that there was this lot of water coming through the uh, little bump out, where there's a concrete on the outside, well, on the outside of the building is a, a bump out with a concrete cover that is for accessing the wellhead, should it need to be serviced. Well, there's a crack in that um, concrete area, and it's getting progressively worse, so I was gonna ask Greg to look at it and see if that's something he can either repair or cover or just find.
Where was the water that they saw?
It's on the, if you go into the south side of the building, there's a square box, and in, in the basement is that little.
I've been down there for a year, so I haven't seen any water coming from there.
It was pouring rain um, one day last week, and they happened to be in the basement, see if the water from the sprinkler system had stopped, and it was literally dripping through that crack right onto the wellhead. And it has never interfered, never contaminated the water, because we've had it tested several times from the state. It, it, that's correct, um, but we should have, find a way to either put a cover.
For the proving.
And stop that leak from getting through the concrete crack.
I think the only thing to do is caulk it.
Caulk it, okay?
Concrete caulk it.
Yeah, concrete, uh, concrete, I go away, I go.
I have regular mortar concrete.
So anyways, I'll get the handyman to take a look at that and fix it.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Do we want, uh, I'm three to answer.
Yeah. Just, okay, just.
Oh, okay. David? Um, I told you to remind me of something, so.
Yeah, we have an energy fair coming up.
Oh, yes.
Energy.
Energy fair this Saturday, nine to two. Elementary school, it's not just for our town, the town of Bolland, where I'm pretty good with us, and uh, it's pretty sizable.
How many exhibits do you have?
I don't remember the exact amount, but they thought they were gonna be shorter than last year, and then at the last minute, a bunch of people jumped in, uh, there's several local uh, people exhibiting there, several local companies gonna be speaking there on their thoughts, and uh, so they get quite, quite a bunch of stuff going on there that I'm gonna try and be there for a good part of the day. Um, we're in the select one thread on that.
I did it last year, they have a lot of interesting, uh, if you do want any home improvements, a, energy related, it's the place to link up with. More than solar.
Solar vehicles, they're gonna have some solar vehicles outside.
Yeah.
Um, they're gonna have companies, um, hook up the new charging stations and barrage there, uh, they're gonna have uh, heat pump companies there, I think your brother might even be.
Yeah, insulators, solar.
Stallers.
A lot of uh, different types of vendors around.
So, and I know they're gonna be ordering out for lunch with uh, a local place here, as well as, I think, constantly pizza vendors and or anyone that's gonna spend the day there. Um, my next question for you guys is, uh, we talked earlier about putting stone around that uh, town hall building, like we did this one last year, do you want me to get some pricing on that?
Absolutely, I think we're ready for it.
Okay.
I think grants is in.
And uh, Jeff, everything on your building done for this year that you want to do? I know you were still working on the.
The, the pad, the physical building, yes, we repaired the roof. Yes, that's right.
Okay, all you. And you're still, the pad's still a work in progress, would be?
Yes.
Okay. Um, if you get anything towards the end of the year, we need to accommodate.
Yes.
And I'm gonna make one more pass, and the um, roofing company was supposed to come back to me for the fire station roof, so. We are.
I think it's the, the only way it's gonna, we're gonna have no fire station to fix that roof eventually.
Well, you know, the, the chief says it's not leaking now, so, you know, we're, if we do, we're damned if we don't.
Yeah.
Right now, it's been a very wet summer, it's been dry, so.
What's, what, maybe it's working?
I don't know.
My thing is, I just wanna get those doors fixed, but the uh.
Yeah, those doors are already ordered and, yeah, in, in progress, so that part's done.
When's the construction start on that?
I said first week of November, right?
That's when the doors are coming, that's when probably, probably make sure the doors are landed before we start the work, because as you know, garage doors are delayed.
And you want them open for too long?
No. We'll have the doors potted site before we start taking it to fire.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, just uh, uh, make sure there was a uh, a physical accident at the transfer station, garage door, speaking of garage doors, it was denting up, no injuries, but just uh, it was a, it's a, just bump, bump into one of the panels of the garage doors, it's being fixed, Woody's on top of that.
I did have the call, I was gonna tell you guys about our mark, but he didn't come in. So that Levy is gonna be able to tell you guys about that.
Yeah. And then uh, lastly, the employee, uh, the new employee, uh, seems to be working well, but he's working too many hours, so he asked for a reduction in hours. I think Woody's is, is embracing that, and he's.
At the transfer station.
And, that's all I have, the transfer station. Gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn, uh. Eight oh three.